Okay, I'm gonna call a meeting to order. If all is going well with our technology, this is our first time to be live tonight. If the technology fails us, we will try it again next time. Scott's over. We'll have a couple council members coming in later. Do I have anything here for public forums tonight? Any new public forum? Do I have any additions or changes to the agenda? No additions or changes? Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
I want a motion to approve the agenda.
A motion made by Tony from the Senate?
Oh, sorry.
Seconded by Andy on the favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, I have consent agenda. Any questions or concerns on minutes of August 18th, 2025, order bills and payroll approval? Okay, or was it our contract?
The $500. I thought that was for repair.
That should be under our contract with them. If I have no other questions or concerns, do I have a motion to approve consent agenda?
I have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm agreeing, make a motion to approve consent agenda, do I have a second?
Second.
Andy, second, on the favor, say aye?
Aye.
Consent agenda approved. Unfinished business. Kim, can you give us the most recent update you have on the online survey, please?
So, we did get the spreadsheet. We are still needing about 80 more surveys. 70 to 80. I have a batch in there that I need to send to her and it maybe has like 15 in it. But I do have a spreadsheet of addresses. If you guys would wanna look at it, if there's anybody on there that you're willing to talk to about.
Yes, I'm gonna ask the council members if you could briefly go to the city office afterwards, look at the list of people that still have a check in there and see if any of them are your neighbors or friends. And start there, so you can get them with your agenda. Or see if you can get them to fill out a survey. And then, on Friday, after we send this batch in, we'll be making phone calls. And we do have the ability to extend that through September. We were just trying to get it done by September 1st, so we can have the numbers for this grant. But we don't have to have the online numbers for the water grant. However, they will come in handy when and if we get the grant, because it'll demonstrate what our match would need to be. So if you guys can all see Kim, after the meeting, I'd really appreciate it. I feel like I'm gonna send you guys all to the principal's office. And as of right now, we still have the correct numbers, so we are within the numbers we need in regards to percentage. We just don't have enough people that have filled that so far. Correct, Kim? So, just asking the public to please, please fill out their online survey.
Is that something that we can share on social media as well?
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, what we could do is have Kim create a city BUR post on our online survey and then we can share it on the BUR page. That would be, that would follow our policy, our social media policy.
I almost wanna appreciate if we create like an event on Facebook. Like a, to an event, any set of time where we had something set up here or we had community members recently that had filled out there, but to be able to share that and tell that people, you know, set their mind here on their calendar, on Facebook or whatever.
Yeah, so I know I've been going to farmers market and so far it caught everybody that's there. They went to the school, that we do need to add on our best. Let me ask the senior center.
We've got questions up on the rec sign too.
Oh yeah, that's my dad.
Yeah.
I'm gonna ask the senior center, we'll have Kim, see if we get something on the rec sign.
I know they're separated from us, but could that be something as well that we can ask the school to, to blow a flyer or announcement to have the kids send help to their parents as well?
Well, yeah, the online survey can go in the backpack.
Yeah. See if they'll do that. Hey, do you even have a, have a thing maybe or a table you do for someone at a baseball game?
There's not one.
Oh, no, I don't work on that one right now.
I'm gonna ask anyone who's planning on.
It's not, it's a second, okay. Well, some of the.
There's gonna be those.
Or maybe they have those. Okay, yeah, or the volleyball, I know I wasn't talking about. But to the, you know, maybe the, maybe the fall athletics, we could probably do something there too.
So here are my thoughts. If any of those things, we have Kim doing the rec center. I will call the senior center. Andy, will you please get him home to school, because you're the representative for the school board?
Yes.
You're the liaison for the school board, how do you rephrase that? Tommy, did you find out about middle school things?
Yeah, I got the first one's Thursday.
Okay.
They have volleyball football this Thursday. I'll try to be sketchy.
Okay. I'm out on Thursday, still have a, it's not an option for me. But I do know that I'm in the city office on the 12th. And I do know that Kim's working with the grant lady on the 5th. But we should be able to start doing some phone. From the thoughts too, I just really don't want the phone calls to be anywhere other than the city number because we're asking for personal information. I mean, if you call your friends, that's one thing, but I just don't want us randomly calling strangers off of our cell phones. It should be on the city BUR phone number, so. How many do you think you have?
To turn in, probably about 15.
15.
15 to 20.
Is there a water bucket cake that the seniors are, mom, mom?
Yeah.
Yeah, a few or three of those, I'll pick them up.
And for the audience too, if you wanna take some online surveys, they're sitting right in the office. So if you live in BUR and you wanna get a few filled out by your neighbors, all you gotta do is fold it in half, put it in an envelope and put it in the city office slot. Okay. Next is Scott, you're on it up for a few violation in the tables.
I would have to get my, I guess, I think it was, a table of eight was 675 and a table of six was 575. But I was wondering, so would like to participate in our table again, should I say, why don't you actually do about two people today?
Yeah, so the table of eight is 750, that's about the text. And a table of six is 575. And I believe last year we brought two tables of eight.
How would we fill them?
We did not fill them, unfortunately, using stomach food, but ended up taking out four, five of our employees in their spouses. I'm just curious, if maybe two tables of six would be enough?
Yeah, I'm kinda recommending, if you feel like it's going to be enough for employees and all, if it was a six.
Kim, what do you think?
If they need data, it might be like 30. A lot of dates, I mean, I just couldn't watch the time.
What's a specific date?
Uh, November 18th.
November 18th. And time is like 6:30 or something? I'm not sure I got a time right now, but save the date, it was November 15th. I think last year it was about 6:30.
Yeah, I think two tables of six.
Well, it's 5 o'clock, it's, I think, we're gonna have to, it starts at 6 o'clock, I think. 5 o'clock is to start playing. What's the time they say this year?
And I would say it was a very good time. So those of you that didn't get to come, I can't remember who all didn't make it, but is it gonna be similar to the last one?
It will be quite similar. I don't think the thing is going to change, yes, it's pretty, more, it's gonna be more like different table sets and things like that. But there'll be a food truck and desserts provided, I think every, she is doing desserts, cookies and stuff this year, we're still kind of in the planning stages of some of the natural items of dessert. There'll be a food truck and desserts promoted. There'll be a farm, cash bar, I don't wanna say it, it'll be a little different from last year. Last year was good rule donations, I think a lot of people thought everything was regressed. We learned a lot of lessons on what the foundation can and cannot do as a nonprofit. So there'll be a lot of auctions, I have an auction, and if anybody wants to stay fast to the end, there'll be an active little event.
So I do have, come to think of it, we did two tables of eight last year, because we did invite Brad. And he had a birthday, he was there, yeah. We did invite Brad and we had all employees invited and all the council members invited, so.
Probably do a table for, 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 for.
So you could go set the city council, you could go set the family current.
Last year, I had a move between family and the foundation. That would probably be the same. I mean, that was some sort of a chore we did while in there.
I think you could probably get away with a table of eight and a table of six. Because I too don't know how to table for a car wash, so I don't have to see the city council. What's the difference in price between table six and table eight?
I'm like, somewhere between 125. 750 versus 505, I'm excited about it. My math isn't working today, sorry. It's 111, it's 112, if you need to buy it, just, you know, first, first seat. So I'd say we'll wait this, this time, 750, great.
We just pull dealer out of the office and let people sign up and.
Yeah. When are we gonna do no bio?
Probably within next month or so.
Okay.
We're not, we're not on a serious front yet, but it's.
So let's get this signed, actually, and we'll make a decision by the first meeting in October.
Okay, that looks just not the man. If that change, if that changes on the, on the, you know, I think the first.
Perfect. So by the first October, we'll have an RSVP sheet filled out. It's gonna make people more stressed on us.
I'm pretty sure they're going to like to save some of the faculty.
Sure.
Two sixty, we have to tie it up, but. And we are absolutely in that board.
Okay. Okay. Shouldn't that be tabled until the first meeting in October? Nicely compact. Come on, everyone. You wanna turn your microphone on still?
Do I just stop?
Okay. So Marshall, can you help? And turn it on and edit it in front of this, it needs to be in front of this face. It's not super sensitive, Justin. So can we bring it towards you?
What's up? Can you hear me?
Yeah, just a jester. You're okay.
Okay, so I'm coming over here from Nice Brothers and we've been talking about this since May. And about possibly getting you guys to extend our contract. And so we're just proposing, and you've talked to everybody, right? On either five year or ten year. And the reason we like to do this is we have one with Falsted, we have one with South Touch. It just makes planning so much better in here. We feel for you guys and for us, so we can kind of, we just, we're a logistic company at the end of the day. And that way we know what's going on. So anyway, the only difference between a five year and a ten year is that on the five year, we would. If you're willing to sign a five year, we would do away with the next increase. And then if you do a ten year, we would do away with the next two increases. Just as sort of an incentive to get you there, to do a ten year or at least five. And so service, you guys are getting happy with our service, I assume? Wait, I hear you now. You what?
I said last week we had a good move, but.
What happened last week?
They did, and two of them had cancer.
You call us or call? Let us know when that happens so we can figure out what, what happened.
I think everybody had good news and everybody else had bad news.
Well, she's not a bad day.
So.
Let's figure it out.
Um, so let me make sure I understand right, that if we sign a five year, do we bring toward them the same? And if we do a ten year, do we bring toward them the same for two years?
Right, so there is a CPI increase built into the contract originally. And that's just part of the yearly contract. And then but as an incentive, we're doing away with that for with one year if you're going to sign a five year. And then if you do a ten year, we'll deal away with two increases.
Okay. But that would lock us in to really just set it for years with increases.
Correct. CPI, just CPI increases. Like I have, I have a couple notes here, so in twenty twenty-four, it went up three point three percent. And twenty twenty-five, it went up two point five. So for us, we've just realized that we just, we have to constantly raise our prices incrementally. Or else we just, just to be, just to stay sustainable, we've got to do that. So we've just felt that we've kind of changed our model over the last year where we do this on every contract.
When, let's, let's assume we get a, in your contract, we get a new extension. On the third year, if CPI starts to become dynamic, it's going to affect that. About what was it, like a nine percent increase versus this kind of thing?
Right, in a contract for that kind of thing.
By two point nine, we just go back to what's here. And just write it like that in particular areas. So we're not even, not a keynote on what you're asking.
Right, so we're going to lock them on, except figures at that time. You go back to that CPI for that experience, because that's not.
Correct. Correct, yeah, correct, so.
And then a contractor was the rates could, could jump up to, because we have no specific rate, so I guess that three percent every year?
No, it is a CPI, so it's just the consumer, it's, we go off the water, sue or trash. And that's to be a little more specific instead of like, the CPI includes whatever can choose groceries. And so we go off water, sue the trash because that's a little more precise for our industry. And so it's, but it's unpredictable. You don't know, like during COVID, there was one year that was like seven, that was a crazy year. But typically, this is what we're looking at, like two point five, three, might be a little bit lower. We just look at that as a fair way for us and for you. That's, that's a best way to look at it.
So you don't say, if we sign a ten year contract, we're waiting for these two years. And then at seven, it is going to be three or something here?
That one, what do you think?
I think if we sign a ten year contract and we don't get two increases, wait. Is it in a contract that says years three depend that the CPI would be three percent rates?
No, because it's all based on the CPI. Is that, I might not be making that clear. Yeah, it's essentially based on like inflation, uh, expense of all three years, so.
And it's what we know of, not we know of CPI, but when we are looking at rates, but it's the national average. When we're looking at rates for sewer water, whatever, it's all, it's all nationally done.
Yeah, there's a particular chart that we look at and that's what we realize, I think it's a national Bureau of Labor Statistics that, but mine.
Somebody with those stats then.
Well, just, as I said before, we just look at it as a fair way, rather than saying, hey, it's going to be one percent, it's going to be five percent. Just CPI, it makes it fair for everybody. I mean, our costs all go up and sooner or later, you got to, just like in the city, you guys have to pass costs on to residents. You have to pass our costs on to our customers. It's a thing.
Along with the landfill prices that they keep increasing?
Right.
So, so to be fair, we actually are not up for contract until twenty twenty-six. Mayor Payne had said that they would like to entertain this idea of going into contracts earlier versus waiting. And in our budget, this would allow us to only have to increase solid rates for twenty twenty-six at one percent instead of four percent. And so it was one thing that was going to keep us from increasing our rates very much in one utility.
I think it makes sense for sure, as well as we're looking at, again, trying to plan long term and actually get ahead for our projections moving forward in a long term sense to try and lock it in as early as we can and for extended period of time. So I'm all in favor of doing it for, you know, the ten year stance, just to have a better idea of what we're looking, looking at ahead for my whole work. Right.
There's no locked in fee for most any year.
Right, and no matter what we do, we're not going to ever get a locked in rate for that time. But having not raised rates for two years would be really nice. And then, you know, knowing that it'll average, let's say, between three or five percent afterwards, if we can plan appropriately. But just having that kind of lock in set, knowing what we get to it just bigger before, I think that at least helps us a little bit. And we start looking more in the long term than what we had then.
I think one thing that comes to my mind, I agree with what you're saying, is also, I think what we're seeing with our service has been very good. Our some sort of program, you're thinking over the actual dispatch and that, that's worked out for the workplace citizens from everything that I've heard.
Oh, it's really amazing. I just get the man actually for next week to do so. I really appreciate what you guys have done to allow the chemistry to go around town and actually be able to have people come in and use that to, I think, clean up your business. So, you know, can't be trash, that's really helpful. I appreciate that. That all goes back to King. She's like, you guys are kind of like, I think you did, she is the one who kind of actually.
I don't know what I do.
What's that?
I don't know whether, if you've got any companies that do that, so.
I don't know.
Maybe that right now they do it.
Yeah.
I think you guys just have a forum, Karen, everything answered, say you're talking about the Falsted, right? And then get, do you guys provide a sponsor for senior citizens or is that through? And what, somebody had mentioned before that Falsted had this town.
It came up somewhere here and I am honestly not sure the specifics on that contract. We try and not do that, just make it simple and across the board. And when we get into that, then we kind of, you know, we just, you're kind of asking sometimes. Then you guys start asking people, how are you? And I mean, just, we, we like to just keep things super simple if we can.
Have, have we ever approached Falsted and asked them how we do?
I never.
I think we.
We went, we went off in that work session. I'm not sure that I wanted to quote everything about having the stuff in front of me, but the cons for us were, they have. I can't remember my office staff, five office staff, and they do have to police it. And so that was like the two top cons for us to be able to navigate that. I believe when we discussed in a work session, it kind of came down to if we ever did a senior event at this town, there almost just have to be a specific amount of one bill a year or something for it to be able to keep off. But Falsted did say that they do have to police it and, like I said, they do have five, I believe, don't quote me on that, but they have quite a bit more office staff to navigate. And it was something that they were doing in the previous company before they had a contract.
I would say overall, fifty percent of town, none of ours, I don't think we have senior this town anywhere. But some, I mean, it is done in places.
Whatever, something that has been done in the ground, we're all on top of something for us.
We were rather not. Yeah, I mean, you guys say, hey, look, most of our ten year, yeah, we won't talk, talk about anything. But we, you know, we, we were.
And it was mostly on our side. I probably didn't try and help to navigate it.
Any other questions?
So I guess I'm just going to ask the council, do I have any other motion for, are we going to, for either tabling us until twenty twenty-six? Going into a tighter contract with them or going into a situation?
I'd make a motion going into a ten year contract. I second that.
Um, there's a.
I'm not.
All pros and. Motion carried.
Okay. You may come back to the office sometime and just get you.
I have a problem, I'll say it.
Okay, I have one, it's just not the proper date.
Yeah, it's all right.
Okay.
Okay.
You just want something else? Okay. So I just walk over here and.
Sure. Make a first and a last.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Yeah, we appreciate your service. And then just. It's not like it's very. It does not happen weekly. I have every Tuesday, I'm sure on weekly, that would be stretching us a little bit.
Definitely not weekly.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Okay, the next contract we're discussing in the void group contract, the sooner that we engage in this, the sooner that communications can begin and pre-work can be done for our audits. And since all they do in this government, it's best to get, get started. And so we didn't have a huge agenda tonight. I felt like this could be something we excited. So we just need to have a motion to enter to the twenty twenty-five audit contract. Can I say that right then? Yeah.
Is that the gentleman that came to the work session?
Yeah. Yeah. So this would be to engage into the acceptance of the audit of December five is going to be the first twenty twenty-five audits.
How many of them should enter into the contract with the group for the audit?
And the motion, do I have a second?
I'm sorry.
All three are sent out? Motion carried. Okay, last is the free lot discussion. Something that hasn't brought to my attention and I needed to bring it to the council's attention is, we have the plumbing and stuff available to one of the lots. But we don't have any services to the other two lots. And we do not have anywhere in the next two years' budget to even attempt to bring services to those two lots. So when Kim is giving out information, she basically needs permission to say, this is the one lot that we have that's free. We can be other two, we do not have finance to give you two of these to at this time.
Can somebody get it, knowing that there are only two years of the services we'll give them?
I don't know that that is fair for the council to commit to something like that right now. I'm just saying, I just know what the next two years' budget looks like. I don't, I don't know what their previous numbers look like.
I think with the contract that they have to actually ensure and to continue through the law and all the stuff they activate or this timeline is involved there. And by saying we can't have the utilities there for two more years, that, but I don't think with no void that part of the contract, we have a group of one quarter year to something different. We don't want all, from my knowledge, set there for propane, we can see the others, so that takes away that opportunity as well. Like the smartest prudent thing to do is to, what's your thing is, say we have one lot built ready and two more lots will be kind of available in the future.
Yeah. I mean, no motion or anything needs to be made. I just, I needed to bring it to the council's attention and I think it's wise that we have a pretty tight budget for twenty twenty-six. That we at least be rational with what we can do. So. So if everybody's in agreement, good hit, that's what Kim will share, you have one lot that's built ready. So, okay, perfect. And I look forward to someday, the other two being built ready for this, just something we can put in our budget right now. Kim, do you have anything for administrative items?
I don't know.
See Kim afterwards, that's, that's administrative. Government body report. We'll start with finish. Scott, I mean, go ahead and announce the November fifteen thing over there.
Basically, we're working foundation for fundraising, we've gone for that. And nothing to reveal with the library going on until during the Friday evening, Monday evening, Friday evening. So this for, for more people in the platform, we, we had actually was very busy for a change. So hopefully that continues, but we'll find out how, there's looking to be a new school year party.
House Jim, please. Great. Hi, do we have any more farmer's markets?
Uh, I don't believe so.
Oh, we don't have any more farmer's markets?
No, I think the next one that was planned or had another benefit schools, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't think it turned out with a possibility, so.
So possible.
I think it's.
I would sold that herm on the floor, even if it ain't going on. But I'm not in there with the floor either, so I don't have time, so.
Okay.
I don't know, that's what I would hope my best.
So I think they're not supposed to revert to community foundation and farmer market, it would be all of the Facebook page, like that they'll post. Post the next, uh, agenda. Andy, there anything?
Uh, I'm a little bit short right now.
Looks like you're going to be talking to the school.
I'll be talking to the school and we'll try to get the, the elements to be four years out. And see if they're open to doing that, just help yourself and try to get people to come out.
And you have a cemetery for the second Tuesday of September.
September ninth is the next level we'll come on. Getting everything established, like five lots, like they have landed, we're still waiting on the name of the company that you ran to for the restaurant backing.
So I'm not going to come up with it, but I am going to that same event the second weekend in October. And so I'm going to leave away that we're going to be there.
And I did talk to somebody that would be interested in that before. Um, it's local, so we'll talk about that. In the chat meeting.
Actually, I do have a question. I know that we briefly talked about it before, but is there any date for time at one of the council meetings where we would like State Senator Stephen Owens to come and talk or answer questions for us, to the public, for anybody else? He's open to doing it anytime. I'll text him a little bit, but if that's something at a state level that the city were concerned about, he's open to trying to chat with us.
I know, let's, let's talk about that, see if that's something we can do.
State property, I guess, there's something that's, it's been a point of conversation, so, uh, yeah, he's open to, we're coming in time one too.
Glad you said that. For the mayor part, we have a work session in September scheduled, but because we did so many for the budgets, I have, I took it off the September agenda. So we need to decide if we would like to have a work session October sixteenth or October twenty-eighth. It's probably three random things that we postponed through the year. I don't, I can't think of all the things that are in that work session yet, but that's when some of it's going to be, um, a few of the items that we didn't make decisions on are in our goals.
So we're not doing work session on October twenty-eighth?
No.
Okay.
I don't know about anybody else, but I'm a little bit afraid for work sessions. So the October sixteenth is a Thursday or October twenty-eighth is a Tuesday?
Uh, maybe.
The twenty eighth works for me.
I was gonna say sixteen, but I should say twenty eighth for, so it seems to be trying to.
On that. Great. At this point, it's twenty eighth works. Okay, let's go ahead and schedule the next work session to be October twenty-eighth, six thirty. And I do not have that agenda yet, but I have a big one together. Okay, the rest of September, we've got a work session. How does that sound, Andrew?
It's at six thirty.
Yeah.
And we must wear Halloween, so.
Okay, that's fine. Like you do a little bit. And as for mayor report, I don't have anything on it, but I know the twelve. Kim and I are going to be meeting with HUDD. She meets with him on the fifth, the twelve for me and HUDD again. And that is the person that's helping us write the engineering grant and the water grant. And so my number is on the Tuesday, but I'm checking right now. And we'll be doing the phone call to get the rest of the LMI surveys. And then our next city council meeting is the fifteenth and we do have our hearing. And we vote on the twenty twenty-six budget. So the next meeting, a quorum is great and necessary and the services. That further you.
Yes. Go ahead, just a second, one, one thing.
Sure.
One thing, uh, U N D Foundation, we did not mention. Uh, we were looking at a dog park. I mentioned it to the community foundation members today. One of the locations we were hoping to work with is not available. We're getting, due to some HUD regulations. So we're kind of looking at other city properties or other things around. Some of the others we looked at before, weren't necessarily great fit, but if you guys have ideas, give them to us, Scott or Greg or something for the community foundation. We'll be kicking that around again in the next few meetings probably, so. Because I know that's been something that's been requested and we have some money that potentially can afford that from the owners, so. Anyway, just wanted to mention that, that if, if you have ideas of places, um, let, on the note, forget one of the other foundation members.
Is there enough space more for the, at this church?
I guess, there's a little more panis station, you want? They didn't want to go. So.
So for the, since we're in our life and hopefully it's actually working, um, the Burke Community Foundation has been really diligently on achieving their goals and how they want to contribute, just like the city council wants to make new goals and how we're going to follow through into things. And we're very thankful for the foundation and how they've coordinated to want to turn it around. Um, anyways, uh, with that being said, I also, at Farmer's Market, had a, a lady who has been working behind the scenes to try to find out how to get a grant to help put toddler-sized playground equipment in also. So, I mean, she's not brought anything forth yet, but what I'm enjoying about Farmer's Market, I'm enjoying about some of the community events is I'm hearing groups and people striving to, um, improve or add on or grow the amenities that they have. So I think that's very exciting and a lot of people working together. And again, I can't say that not the L M I survey is so, so important because all of these groups can use these numbers to help on grants. So we have got to get that done by the end of this month, without a doubt. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to the foundation, thank you to our board, thank you to Mr. Jerry, who's navigating our microphone system, and Marshall, who's volunteering to the VIP. So I really appreciate you guys coming to the meeting. I'm excited for the future for. So with all that being said, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'm excited. All bater? We need to draw your thing.